Meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on June 8th, 2021. Roll call, please. Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Gross.
Here.
Winn.
Present.
Dodd's. Goodrich.
Here.
Okay, all council members except for Dodd's are present, as is the mayor, city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and several staff members in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Gross, seconded by Goodrich to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the agenda is approved. Okay, tonight we have a proclamation I'm very honored to make in regards to National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Let me read this proclamation. City of Corleville proclamation, whereas every day 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded, and on average there are more than 13,000 gun homicides per year, homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Iowa has an average of 281 gun deaths every year with a rate of 8.7 deaths per 100,000 people. Iowa has a 43rd highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exasperate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, born June 2nd, 1997, was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 4th, 2021, to recognize her 24th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Pendleton and other victims and their loved ones, which was inspired, which was inspired by her friends who asked classmates to wear orange because hunters wear orange to announce themselves, other hunters, when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John A. Lundell, Mayor of the City of Corleville, proclaim the first Friday in June, June 4th, 2021, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Further, I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic events of gun violence, honor and value human lives. Signed and sealed this 8th day of June, 2021. John A. Lundell. And with the organization Moms Demand Action, Rebecca Truskowski is here to receive this. Rebecca, feel free to come up and receive it and I'd have to have you say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Lundell and the city council members for the opportunity to be here and for issuing this proclamation, recognizing Gun Violence Awareness Day. My name is Rebecca Truskowski and I'm with Moms Demand Action, the Johnson County group. Moms Demand Action is a bipartisan movement of Americans. We like to say mothers and others advocating for public safety measures that protect people from gun violence. We are not anti-Second Amendment. Some of our volunteers, in fact, are gun owners. We also offer an educational presentation called Be Smart that helps parents and adults normalize conversations about gun safety and take responsible actions that can prevent child gun deaths and injuries. As Mayor Lundell said, the wear orange originated on June 2nd, 2015, what would have been Hadiya's 18th birthday. It's now observed nationally and in the years since 2015, participation in wear orange has increased tenfold. The color orange has a long and proud history in the gun safety movement and honors the more than 100 lives cut short and the hundreds more wounded by gun violence every day, and it demands action. Here in Iowa, gun violence is increasing at a much higher rate than the national average. It's even worse for people of color. Black people are 13 times more likely than white people to die by gun violence compared to 10 times nationwide. Thank you again for issuing this proclamation and for honoring those in our community and across the country who have been impacted by gun violence.
Happy to do it, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your efforts. Okay, moving on to item five, citizen comments. This is of course the time for anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to us tonight about an item that's not already on the agenda. Please come to the microphone and sign in and state your name and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Hello, I am Bree Horstman with South Slope. Recently met with Mr. Hayworth and met with you all, I think virtually last year. So I'm the Business Development Manager for South Slope and I just like to go around to all of the communities in which we serve, at least annually, if not semi-annually, just to stay connected, make sure we're maintaining positive relationships, and see if there are any questions or feedback from the council or people within your town if you've heard any questions or feedback. So that's all I have, and if you have anything for me, let me know. And also I can leave some cards as well. So we appreciate being in Corleville.
Thanks, Bree. Yeah, I know Kelly, the city administrator, said he had a really good discussion with you not too long ago, so we appreciate you staying in touch.
Thank you.
Hey, Bree, maybe you could explain to people, because we had talked about that day and actually a citizen talked about a question today in regards, you have districts that you have to serve and then there's options. Could you just explain that, because I think that's really helpful to people to understand?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're an organization that's actually governed, in a sense, by the Iowa Utilities Board in the areas that we serve, started with telephone, but obviously we provide internet as well. So we have what we call ILEC and CLEC areas, which means that we are the incumbent local exchange carrier, or we are competitive, we are a competitor local exchange carrier. And so Corleville's a little bit tricky because we are the ILEC or the incumbent in North Liberty. So if someone would like a service, we would provide it in that area. We also receive some funding back, some kickback for that from some of the entities that govern us. However, in our competitive areas, we do not. So it has to make really great business sense for us to serve those areas. So in Corleville, it's a little bit of a mix because our exchange boundaries do not align with any of the city limits or city boundaries, as it were. So we actually are an incumbent all the way down to about Oakdale Boulevard. And so part, so even though that's our North Liberty Exchange and we are required to provide services for those areas, then the other part of Corleville is our competitive area. And so what that means for us is we have to be very strategic as we come down south of Oakdale Boulevard when we're providing services. Does it make good business sense for us? The other thing I would say is that we are a cooperative, so one of the things that we're always keeping in mind is our members' best interests and how we can best utilize the funds that we have and the services that we have. So I get the question a lot, if we would continue coming into Corleville, and I would say we're always looking for ways to expand and grow our network. But one of the things that we're focused on right now is actually upgrading our current members in the areas that we serve that are on copper with fiber. So we are, we are constantly upgrading that in hopes that we would, we will actually very soon have a fully complete fiber network, which is what we, we try to do. So it's a little bit complicated, but I'm, I'm really happy to meet with anybody individually if you have further questions about it. But yeah, so that's, that's kind of the reasoning behind that and the area, so.
Thank you, Bree.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. This is kind of weird after like a year of virtual meetings and Zoom and everything. But I'm here for two reasons. My, oh, my name is Dan Cobble, by the way, sorry. First, I'm here to promote an event that's going to be held by the Iowa Freedom Riders on June 19th at 6:00 PM in S.T. Morrison Park at the Hilltop Shelter. It's an event commemorating Juneteenth. We will have food, games, and other activities, and it will just be a really fun time for the community, and I encourage everybody to come out and just have a good time, get to know your constituents, and just enjoy Juneteenth. I would also like to speak about regarding the MRAP. This military-grade vehicle is owned and maintained by the county and the sheriff's office and funded by contributions from various law enforcement agencies across Johnson County. It has been predominantly used by the Iowa City Police in the South Side District, a major, mostly BIPOC neighborhood, as they deliver warrants. The Iowa City Government has requested that the county get rid of the tank, with Mayor, Mayor Bruce Teague stating that a military-grade vehicle designated for war zones is not suitable for use by local law enforcement. And it undermines public confidence and trust in law enforcement and thereby interferes with the goal of keeping the community safe. The Board of Supervisors have been coy about using their power to force the sheriff to get rid of the MRAP. While he admitted that it was the right thing to do, Supervisor Rod Sullivan said that while that doing so wasn't worth jeopardizing his relationship with the sheriff. He stated that while he could force the sheriff into action by denying budget requests for equipment and personnel, he wouldn't. Royce Ann Porter and Lisa Douglas-Green have denied even having the ability to do this, despite Sullivan admitting that they do. It should be worth noting that every candidate running in today's election for a seat on the Board of Supervisors opposes the county owning military equipment such as the MRAP. I'll be honest, I don't know if the MRAP has ever been deployed in Corleville, but let's be real, that's, that's beside the point. Corleville PD is one of several agencies contributing funds to the maintenance of the, of the vehicle and therefore is complicit in it being used to terrorize Johnson County residents. Furthermore, according to Lonnie Pulbaric in a news article from last year, Chief Kron supposedly supports keeping the MRAP. This is unacceptable, and you, the City Council of Corleville, have the ability to change this. I call on the council to forbid Corleville PD from taking part in any operation utilizing the MRAP. Cut off any financial support from Corleville which may go to the MRAP. Also, please follow the lead of the Iowa City Council and come out vocally as opponents of the use of such military vehicles in Johnson County law enforcement. Don't be complicit in the militarization of predominantly BIPOC neighborhoods. Because frankly, children in the South Side District of Iowa City seeing the MRAP deployed and rolling through their streets were really, it freaked them out, and it has a major psychological impact on them. And this is especially true with the Iowa City Police Department just rolling this out. I mean Supervisor Rod Sullivan said that Chief Liston basically has the keys and can use it whenever he would like. So while this issue, while the MRAP may not be a vehicle that has been deployed in Corleville, it's, the Corleville City Council and the Corleville Police Department have a role in this, so thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else like to speak to us tonight? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Item six is 711, 713, and 715, Fifth Avenue. It's a public hearing for the sale of these three lots to a developer who will renovate the existing homes to sell for no more than $175,000 with a 30-year deed restriction to ensure their homes are owner-occupied. I would like to, oh, I get to use my camera for the first time in a long time. I'll open this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us tonight on this topic? Any written?
No written.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and that's the only action tonight on that project. This is...
Yeah, we will just, we will have this at the next meeting. The developer wasn't able to review the contract in time for this week's meeting, so we will have that on the next agenda.
Why don't you go ahead and just say a few words about the, how this is a great project for...
Yeah, this is part of those, of the overall projects that we purchased in that area, which is immediately north of Corleville Central and Corleville Central Park in that area. These are three single-family houses that will be renovated and then sold to an owner-occupied family that will have it as an owner-occupied dwelling. We would hope that the first one would be completed by the end of the summer, but also in conjunction with these homes, we are doing work on stormwater in that neighborhood as well. So it, not only that will impact those properties, but adjacent properties in that neighborhood as well. So we'll get three single-family homes renovated and sold and then, but we'll also solve some stormwater issues that are in that neighborhood.
Great.
Later date, this coming winter and spring, we'll work on the other properties that we have in that neighborhood as well.
Super. It's a great initiative. Okay, moving on to item seven. Excuse me. This is a public hearing not to exceed $11 million general, geo-bonds, or general obligation of renewal loan agreements. This is for the financing and acquisition of the Green State Family Field House. This is part of the financial strategy that we've had since it was just a concept and we're just implementing what we initially planned to do. So with that, I will open the public hearing. Are there any comments on this issuance? Any written?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution determining to proceed with the entering into one or more general obligation urban renewal loan agreements and taking additional action thereon, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any comments from the council? Questions? Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
The resolution passes all ayes with Dodd's absent. Item C is also a public hearing for amendment to the wastewater treatment plant loan through the state revolving loan program. It will effectively lower the interest rate on the wastewater treatment plant loan to allow for additional stormwater quality projects to be funded without additional cost to the city. Now open the public hearing. Any comments? I'm betting no written.
No written.
Close the public hearing and consider the resolution.
Resolution approving a proposal to enter into one or more sewer revenue loan agreements and to borrow money thereunder, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any questions or comments?
I'd just let everybody know, there's several things that'll be covered by this funds. One is the green roof at the Extreme Arena, also the water system that will be, be able to use a cistern that will be used to water other areas in the Iowa River Landing, and then also to purchase land in western Corleville for a park. And some of that land has fins in them, which are very unique in Johnson County, and I think there's only a couple other places that have them. And so that will be ultimately made into a park for the community, but also protect some very environmentally sensitive areas.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. Did we do a roll call? Okay, roll call, please.
Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Dodd's absent. Okay, item E is a resolution that provides for the refinancing of portions of several series of bond issues. The repayment of the refunding bonds will be, will be from the same revenue sources as the original bonds. The debt service, property tax levy, and mall and Highway 6 tip revenues. These rate, the purpose of this refinancing is to capture a lower interest rate and hence savings to the city. Resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement awarding the sale providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bond Series 2021A and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same, is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions? Anything you want to say, Tony?
I could offer some information on these two refundings. Items E and F taken together are about 13.7 million of refinancing bonds that, that refund 13.2 million, so there's a little bit lower outstanding debt after these transactions. These two bonds, E and F, are the first two of three series. You'll see a third series at the next meeting. There's some tax regulations that require separation by 15 days between certain types of refundings. The savings in, in dollar terms are 1.54 million in present value terms, so in today's dollars. And that's because we, in the first series, covered under E in the agenda, we lowered the interest rates from about 4.47 to 3.08, so that's about a 1.4% decrease. And in seri, in this series covered by item F, we came from interest rates that were 4.82 down to 2.27. So that's a little over 2.5% decrease.
Great. Thank you. That was Tony Rotlin, our Director of Finance for the city. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Dodd's absent. Item F is essentially the same thing, just a different series. Resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement awarding the sale providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021B, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same, is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Winn. And any comments? Roll call, please.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Dodd's absent. Item G, the last of the financing issues, is a resolution that finalizes the last portion of the financing not to exceed $1 million for the construction of green stormwater infrastructure included in the East Second Avenue project, which is now complete. Resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing and approving a loan and disbursement agreement and providing for the issuance and securing payment of taxable stormwater revenue bonds, Series 2021D, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? She was first. Heard it better. Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Dodd's absent. I will say it's much easier to identify who's seconding things in person than it is on Zoom, so. Okay, item eight is the Muddy Creek Lane Patching and Subdrain Project. This is, well, our city engineer, Scott Larson, is coming forward. He can describe what it is and give us a bid report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Last week, we received two bids on the Muddy Creek Lane Patching and Subdrain Project. And just a reminder that this project is doing patching generally in the area just northwest of Wickham Elementary. We've long had some issues with water making its way under the pavement and washing out some of the subgrade material that supports the pavement, so this is going in to hopefully fix that once and for all. So as I mentioned, we received two bids last week, and the low bid was from All American Concrete. The base bid was $118,741, and the bid alternate, which was for flowable mortar, was $2,025. And both of those numbers were below the engineer's estimate, and so we are going to recommend awarding the contract to All American Concrete Incorporated in the total amount of $120,766.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, item B is a resolution accepting the bids and making the award.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction contract for the Muddy Creek Lane Patching and Subdrain 2021 Project, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any comments?
I just wanted to add that work can't start until June 15th.
Coming up soon.
After school's out.
Ah, sure. I'm sure the neighborhood will appreciate that.
Scott, will that affect any traffic flow?
The, it will affect through traffic at times, but we are maintaining access to the local residents.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Dodd's absent. And item C is the same project, approving the contract and bond documents.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the Muddy Creek Lane Patching and Subdrain 2021 Project, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes with Dodd's absent. Item nine is the I-80 First Avenue Interchange Improvements Project, which is an agreement that details the roles and responsibilities of the city and the Iowa DOT through the remainder of the final design phase and construction phase for this proposed diverging diamond new interchange at that location. Resolution, please.
Resolution approving a pre-construction agreement number 2021-6-093 for primary road project with the Iowa Department of Transportation, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
All at once. Seconded by Foster. Discussion? Uh, yeah, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is a resolve, positive resolve of all of the work that staff has put into this, and we had assistance from our congressional delegation as well, but this is, recognizes the fact that the build grant that we received from the federal government, which Ellen was 20...
20.5 million.
Will be essentially our portion of the match for this project, so we will not be putting any cash into the project and that will be covered in. So Ellen Hubble, our Assistant City Administrator, wrote that grant and as, did have the assistance of the Engineering Department and some consultants, but so this is a really good project for us, and the bids will, for this project will be next summer, so with construction starting in fall of 2022.
This is subject to my approval. There is one comment coming back from Ames I want to look at before they, before we sign it, so.
So it'll be subject to the city attorney giving his final approval to the document. Anything else? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes with Dodd's absent. Item 10 is the Hotel and Conference Center. These are agreements that are necessary to transition to a new franchise and operator as the current qualified management agreement with the Marriott will be expiring in August 2021.
Resolution approving a franchise agreement, qualified hotel management agreement, and other associated agreements, introduced... and other associated agreements, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call. Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all eyes, Dodd's absent. Item eleven is the Brown Deer Golf Club. This is for an agreement to run the lower level restaurant at the Brown Deer Golf Club, otherwise known as Divas, from June twenty-first through December thirty-first, 2021. A multi-year contract could be negotiated this fall.
Resolution approving an agreement with San Save LLC to operate the restaurant at Brown Deer Golf Club, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by when? Any comments? Questions? Roll call. Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all eyes, with Dodd's absent. Item twelve is the Oak Hill Cemetery Sign Replacement. This is for the replacement and relocation of the Oak Hill sign, cemetery sign. The retainage to be paid in thirty days is three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
Resolution approving the Oak Hill Cemetery Sign Replacement as completed, introduced for adoption by council member when, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion?
Yeah, just remind everyone that this is the beginning of a multi-phase improvement plan for the cemetery. So this is the first phase, and there's multiple others that will happen and fit in with the sign as we have funds available.
Great. Roll call? Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all eyes, with Dodd's absent. Item thirteen is the Creekside Cross and Flow Trailhead. This is a resolution for the purchase of a twelve-by-eighteen-foot, single-slope shelter with cedar fascia and tongue and groove decking on the bottom side of roof and metal roof for the Creekside Cross and Flow Trailhead. That was not easy to read.
Lot of construction lingo there.
Let's get the resolution, and I'll introduce you.
Resolution, please?
Resolution accepting quotes and awarding contract for a shelter for the Creekside Cross and Flow Trailhead, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Okay, we have Sherri Proud, our Director of Parks and Rec, is going to tell us a little more about it.
Thanks, Mayor. You already described the shelter. And just wanted to comment on the reason why we pulled this out. We have, on the next agenda, we'll have the trailhead itself. And that is mostly stonework and cement work. So we felt like we could get, and we're also have a certain amount of grant funds from a small Wellmark grant and then a match from the city. So we felt like we could erect this, this, after the stonework is done this summer, get this ordered. And it's got a pretty long lead time on it. When, by the time it arrives, then we'll be in a position where our staff can put this up and save that money there. So we would recommend awarding this to ABC Creative Cedar Forest Products for a total of eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Sherri. Any questions or comments from the council?
When will it begin, Sherri?
They're talking about twenty-four, twenty to twenty-four weeks of lead time on this shelter with the way that all of the construction materials are happening right now. So it'll be mid-fall before we'll start on the shelf, putting the shelter up.
And that won't affect the trail at all for people to come and?
No, this is for the trailhead. Yeah, at Creekside Cross. So, and so it's off to the side. It won't affect anything.
Will it have bathroom facility later on done?
No, not at this particular facility. There's restroom facilities planned for the area at Charles G Farm. The master plan calls for a playground, restrooms, shelters, plaza space, and renovation of the two barns that are there. So that'll be a hundred and fifty-yard walk away from this, as well as you go a hundred and fifty yards east, and there's restrooms already there at Creekside Ballpark.
Yeah, so sometime, I have resident come to me and say they go there, and then they try to use the light of restroom for the ballpark, and it was locked. Like the gate to the bathroom is locked, so they can't access it, so I guess.
Yep, I'll look into that. We usually put a porta potty out there more towards cross season, which starts in July. So we can look at that. And then it's supposed to be open Monday through Friday during the day, starting at seven-thirty a.m. all through till nine o'clock at night. But if they caught it on a weekend when we didn't have a tournament, I could see that it was locked up because we have had some vandalism, and so we don't leave those restrooms unlocked. But we'll look at what we can do differently.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else? Roll call. Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolution passes all eyes with Dodd's absent. Item fourteen is the administrative pay scale. This is increase of three percent, effective June twenty-eighth, for employees not covered by a union contract, and is equivalent to the increase approved recently in the unit, union contracts.
Resolution approving an increase in the administrative pay scale, effective June twenty-eighth, 2021, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion?
Maybe you have to, Mike, call in there.
Did you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is just our annual, if you want to call it cost of living type increase that we're, for our benefits-receiving employees. Not all employees, but the benefits-receiving employees not covered by a union.
Thank you. That was Mike Funky, Director of, I was going to say Human Relations, but that's what it used to be called in Iowa City. I don't know.
Human Resources.
Human Resources, that's better. Thank you, Mike. Resolution, or, roll call. Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes, with Dodd's absent. Item fifteen is the Iowa River Landing. This is a one-year license agreement for a retailer in the space next to Anthropology called Monica Berry, doing businesses, how do you say that?
We'll go with CLO.
CLO, thank you.
Resolution, please?
Resolution approving that certain license agreement with Monica Berry, DBA, CLO, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by when? Any questions or comments?
What is it?
Yeah, I told Deanna I was going to get that question. If you have to, it's home goods and some other things. If you look up CLO, Heavenly Goods, if you Google it, it's got different types of products, so.
She had really cool stuff.
Yeah, so. I did anticipate that because I had no clue.
Well, since I moved it, I thought I should know what it is.
Good idea. Okay, roll call, please? Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolutions approved, all eyes, with Dodd's absent. I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar as presented, A through L inclusive.
Thank you. Seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any comments? Roll call. Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Consent calendars approved, all eyes, with Dodd's absent. City administrators report.
Yeah, first of all, the David Clark or wastewater treatment superintendent, I'm going to ask him to give a report in a minute. But he writes a monthly report telling me about all the operations, how things are going. And I thought that he'd made a mistake because the numbers on the reports on the effluent had changed so significantly. And so I asked David if, you know, the new plant was working that well. And he said, in fact, it was. And then shortly thereafter, about two weeks later, DNR also noticed how much the, it had improved. And so I thought it would be good for David, just to give you a real brief update on how well the treatment plant is operating and the impact that it has on the environment, because it's very, very significant, the improvements that they're obtaining.
Well, the new plant went online in July of 2020, about the middle of the month. Spent the rest of that year tweaking the equipment, getting it to get all the bugs out. April first, our new permit came out with our new guidelines for parameters. One of the areas in the parameters that's not a number that we have to meet yet is nutrients, which is total nitrogen and total phosphorus. And the DNR has given us a six-month optimization period, which started April first and ends September thirtieth. And we're overwhelmingly exceeding the numbers on these right now. And the other numbers that we do have to meet on a weekly and monthly basis, we basically get non-detect numbers on all the parameters now, which is a huge improvement from the old plant. So I don't anticipate any issues, and I would anticipate these numbers will continue.
So I think the good news is, obviously, it has a really big impact on the environment. You know, you all and the community made an investment dollar-wise, so that's significant. And then our city staff has really done a good job of, you know, utilizing that plant and making sure that it's operating as good as it possibly can. So I think it's just a really good scenario, and we'll be getting that information out in other ways as well. But, you know, it's just a really good news. And, you know, you hope this is what happens when you make those kinds of investments. And in fact, it's turned out better than we had it planned, so.
I know that the smell has, it's really, really improved. You know, my son used to say we needed to throw some Tide Pods in there whenever we would drive by on the way to school. So, yeah, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Do you mean that it doesn't smell as much, or it smells better?
I don't smell it anymore at all. It's, I don't, there's, I don't smell it at all.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, that's great. Is it a, is it a pleasure to work in the new plant?
Yes, it's a lot less labor-intensive with the new plant. And so it's a lot, very much more efficient.
Good, and safe, I'm sure.
Yes.
Great. Well, thanks for, thanks for coming out, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The other, some more good news that we got today, and this will be on a future agenda item, but I just thought Mike Funky could real briefly report on that, is we've got our workers' comp insurance renewal. And the numbers were, continued to be very, very good. And the good news of that is we pay significantly less. But what's even more important is that our employees are going home safely. And so, Mike, I thought you could just share some of those numbers.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. We did get our renewal for Iowa Municipalities Workers Compensation Association. That's who we have a group pool workers' comp coverage with, with all other cities and counties in Iowa. And because of our good rating and our employees doing such a great job of staying safe, doing things the right way, following procedures, everything like that, and watching out for one another, that's the biggest thing. I mean, if they see something, they should tell their coworker, hey, that's not safe. Let's, let's, let's do it a different way. Based on all that, being a longtime member of IMWCA, I believe we were one of the founding members of, or in the pool back in the eighties, I believe it was, way back then. We get a certain discount for that. We get a discount for having a good rating of our employees staying safe. We get a mod factor rating, all sorts of ratings. The bottom line is, take all of our salaries times their workers' comp rate. Each, each position has a different rate. Police officers are a little more risky than a, than a, than a human resource manager because of their, you know, so they pay more per dollar of salary.
For your information, Mitch, teachers are really high-rated. Very interesting. Not surprising.
So with that, I think our overall premium was supposed to be five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and change, but we're in the hundred and twenty-five thousand. So basically, twenty-five percent is what we're paying of our full premium. So that's, again, attributed to the employees and the investment that the council made way back when to be part of this pool. The good work that IMWCA does in investigating claims, paying them promptly, and keeping us all on our toes on what needs to be saved. So a good team effort by everybody.
Great. Just a couple of other quick things, Mayor. One, you should have got, gotten in your email, the reforestation plan from Bridgewater was completed. The staff reviewed it, made a couple of comments of adjustments that need to be made. It is, they did make those, and so it has been approved. The city attorney has put together the development agreement, which includes all this. And so the development agreement is really the contract that says, you know, holds the developer responsible for making sure that all of this happens. So anyway, that is completed, and they will start implementing now the plan and do the cleanup work that needs to be done to, is one of the first things.
Does the council need to take action on that?
No, because that's just made, incorporated in the development agreement.
Yeah, so when we approve the PUD, I wait for the PUD plan, and then that, that all happens. So I didn't do the agreement, so it starts. So once we get the agreement signed by them, they can go ahead and get started.
Thank you.
So that is completed. And just the last thing I'd like to say is thank, congratulations to all of the graduates this last weekend from high schools around the Iowa City, Correville, North Liberty area. I went to one of the graduations. It was really nice hosting them in the Extreme Arena. And, you know, it was really impressive. When the principal at West High announced that they were going to recognize the ones with academic honors, and so I expected, you know, they would read off four or five names, it was a hundred and twenty people stood, students stood up. So, I mean, that's really impressive. And so that's what's, you know, really in our schools, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. And it was cool in there, I'm sure.
It was cool. And I remember for, because my son graduated from West High in Carver, and it was very hot the night that he graduated. So, yes, it is nice to have air conditioning.
And there was no tornado this year.
I remember that, too.
The last one I was at, there was a tornado.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that. So, yeah, and I saw some social media clips of different, the graduation, it looked really cool in there, so, yeah. Thank you, Kelly. Mayor's report, well, first of all, I want to give out our best wishes for a fast and healthy recovery to council member Dodd's. She underwent a little over a week ago, knee replacement surgery, and so she's home recovering from that. And last I heard, she was doing well, but she's still a little incapacitated. And it's thought would be difficult for her to stay seated for the length of a council meeting. She needed to get up and stretch that leg. So hopefully, she'll be able to join us in two weeks. Get, get well soon, Jill. Probably watching us, I bet. Dan Cobble mentioned Juneteenth coming up. I would just, that'll be before our next council meeting. And just encourage folks to, to look around the community there. He mentioned one event, but there'll be others, both in Iowa City and Correville, and perhaps some of the other neighboring communities, of events commemorating the Black history and so forth around June nineteen, Juneteenth, which is on June nineteenth, which is also my wedding anniversary, so, this year. So take in, keep an eye out for that. And one, just my last thing, I'm just going to, for the benefit of the council and anyone that cares to know as well, remember the dates of September fifteenth to the seventeenth, September fifteen to the seventeenth. That's the Iowa League of Cities Conference, and we are hosting it here in Correville. So I think it's important as the host city that we have a very strong presence each one of those days as much as possible. So, and there'll be social events in the evening as well. They'll be fun. Why are you smiling there, Kelly?
Well, I was just trying to figure out if your anniversary changed.
Yeah, you said your anniversary is the nineteenth this year.
And I guess, and Juneteenth is always the nineteenth?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That was what I was getting at. I wasn't positive it was always a nineteen.
Sorry, Deanna.
Okay, no, well, I knew our anniversary didn't change, but it just gets one year longer. Okay, I better quit, climb ahead. longer. So, okay, I better quit. I'm ahead. City attorney reports.
I'd really like to say it's certainly a pleasure to see us all together again. Nothing other than that, Kevin?
I've got nothing.
And I'll just jump in and say, folks, if you're gonna vote in this special election, you have forty-five minutes to get down here and do it. So committee and council members' reports. Oh, I don't know. Laura, you're down there by yourself. We'll just we'll just start with you.
I am, and I'm just happy to be here and good to see everyone. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. We'll work our way this way. Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things. It's it's strange sitting here.
First time for her.
Yes, since I started, we've always done things over Zoom, and that was quite an adjustment to make. And then we jump into this, and this is quite an adjustment to make for me also. But, you know, I'm I I have really good colleague here and city staff to help me learn the rope here. I want to remind the public that there is a housing rehabilitation program in Johnson County and encourage everybody to look it up and apply for it if you qualify. The only requirement is that you your income is below eighty percent of the area median income. And if you don't know where that is, just go on the our city website, look in the and it's had guidance there. What it does is it's, you know, it's give you a forgivable loan of fifteen thousand dollars for most type of repairs, outdoors, mostly outdoor emergency repairs. You can do windows, doors, siding, HVAC, plumbing, lots of it. And the application, you can find it at www.ECICOG, so E-C-I-C-O-G dot org, or call the East Central Iowa Council of Government at three one nine three six five nine nine four one, extension one two four. Or come here, and I'm sure one of the city staff will be able to help you. There is something that I'm concerned, and I know that I got the stuff out to you all a little late, but I found there was a street that need to be repaired in our city. And it's right as you turn, if you go toward North Liberty on I sixty-five, you make a right turn to go to Texas Row House and Michael's and all of that. That street is in really, really bad condition. And I noticed this a couple of weeks ago. I took some photos, and I was hoping I see some cone around. I was hoping that it will get repaired, but it didn't. So I didn't I didn't know if if we are aware of that.
Yeah, that is a private street. So that's the developer has been notified, and they are responsible for repairing that. And they had the same issue a couple of years ago. So, yeah, they have been notified.
Do we know a timeline if someone asks?
No.
The city engineer was reaching out to them today because we've heard from several people, and they they say they're working on it and trying to get someone there, and they're having trouble. But we are gonna keep pushing harder because it is or at least get a cone out there. So that's something that Scott and I talked about today.
Thank you. There's no cone out right now.
Yeah.
Currently. And it's a little scary because the the difference really.
Yeah, it's an out of out of state developer, and and we're just having trouble getting action.
Okay, that's good to know that it's it's.
Yep.
Taken care of. And one more thing. I was just wondering if we have any sort of ordinance that protects people who are not not taking advantage, but who are, for whatever reason, landlord come up with, you know, reasons, say, we have to remodel the place, and so therefore, we can't renew your lease, and give them very little notice. How do we do we have anything to protect them? And if not, may we please look into that?
The landlord-tenant law is codified in the state code, so those state code provisions would apply. And we can't really do much on top, you know, that that would contradict that code. So there are notice requirements and everything for terminating leases and everything in there. And landlords are supposed to follow those. And if they don't, they can be fined in court by the in small claims court, which some of those didn't, you know, there were some provisions in some leases that were called out a couple of years ago in Iowa, mostly bigger complexes in Iowa City. But there's not much we can do about. We can do housing and inspections and stuff like that, but that's more of a state law provision that we can't really do anything about.
Okay, so the best is that they look up state law and and kind of see?
I can say, I mean.
There is an association that does work with for tenants. It's the Fair.
I can't remember.
Fair House. I believe it's.
We can get you the information.
Yeah, but there is an association that does represent tenants and can really help them understand the law. And if there is issues that they're not following, then can actually represent them in in following through on activity. So anybody that has a question, that's where I would suggest they go, because it is very difficult to go through all of the law and understand, and then figure out what you can do to, you know, make sure that your landlord is abiding by it.
Yep, if I could get that information later, that'd be helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Council member Gross.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you. A few things. First, yeah, I want to officially welcome high to the table and the chamber. And it's great having you on here. And I just very reflective to think about everything that's happened since the last time we met. So but I'm just glad you're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And I want to echo what Kelly said also regarding graduation. It, I have some bias, but it was a the arena was perfect for that venue. It just was. Like, it was a perfect size, perfect setup. We did get some concerns about parking, like the drive-in, but I think I think that will get worked out as we just get used to the the process and that. But I I heard only just compliment after compliment about the arena and and the staff, Jack and his staff did an excellent job of of preparing for that. So that was really nice to have. It's funny that you brought up roads too high. I, as I drive to school, when was the last time the strip has been done? Like, then like right around like before, just east of Camp Cardinal?
It's probably been some time since before that's been improved. And that is the state does that section. They did the section a year ago from Iowa City up to First Avenue, I believe, is where they s- no, they went a little further. They went beyond that, but they have not done beyond that for a while.
Good. Thank you. And lastly, I won't be at the next council meeting, so our second one, I'll be on vacation. And I also, because of that, won't be at the Juneteenth celebrations. And the history teacher in me, Mayor, I'm just gonna read a little thing about Juneteenth because I'm not sure if really people know what it is. And so I'm actually gonna read a Facebook post that I posted a year ago on this day. But I'm just gonna read a little bit because I think it's important that people know what the day is. Today on this Juneteenth, let us call to mind the bravery and tenacity of those who gave everything to win emancipation. Enslaved people played an integral, if not primary, role in their manumission. Frank Baker, Shepard Malloy, and James Townsend. Author and historian Henry Louis Gates has written that these men, quote, unofficially ignited the movement for slaves emancipating themselves with their feet. One of my mentors, Eric Foner, has written, quote, "From the beginning of the Civil War, by escaping to Union lines, blacks forced the fate of slavery onto the national political agenda." Although there were some whites who played an important role in the ending of slavery, the false narrative, which has permeated American history, that enslaved peoples were just sitting around waiting for whites to come save them, is factually incorrect and does further damage to the legacy of Black America. And I think that's one of the reasons why we've seen such an uptick in the celebration of Juneteenth, because it really just it's been an inaccurate portrayal of history from that standpoint. So I applaud the city for hosting or co-hosting that event. And I wish I could be there. Unfortunately, I can't. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Council member Foster.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, it is it is a little bit disorienting to to be in here. I mean, I'm very, very happy to be back. But, yeah, it's it is it, you know, I love what you said, Mitch, about, you know, taking a minute to just think about everything that that we've all been through in in the last year. So I have a few things. So the first thing that I wanted to to mention, I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor for the proclamation honoring the Wear Orange event. I wanted to to thank the work of the Moms Demand Action Group. That is a group that I worked with prior to my my job at the Domestic Violence Intervention Program. And I wanted to just take a minute to talk a little bit about the connection between gun violence and intimate partner violence. At DVIP, we actually observed Wear Orange last week in in support of the many victim survivors who are impacted by gun violence. So just some things to note. A gun in a domestic violence situation increases the chance of lethality by five hundred percent. And every month, an average of fifty-three women are shot and killed by an intimate partner in the United States. And four point five million women have reported being threatened with a gun by an intimate partner over their lifetime. So this just underscores why the work of the Moms Demand Action Group is so important. They they are not an anti-gun organization. They are a pro-gun safety organization. And so I really appreciate their contributions, their their advocacy, and and all of their work in in helping to make our communities safe. I also wanted to note, since this is our first meeting in June, that June is Pride Month. I wanted to say Happy Pride Month to all of our LGBTQIA+ plus community members, friends, and allies. The I believe the celebrations are being postponed till the fall. But you're nodding. That's, yeah, that's correct. Okay.
Corvo's having its own.
Yes, yes, yeah, that 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 is that is very exciting. I'm very happy to to see that development. And then I was also going to mention the Juneteenth celebrations. I too will be out of town, traveling on vacation on the nineteenth. So I will not be able to attend the event that Saturday. I am planning to attend some events earlier in the week. And then finally, a couple of things that I would like to get on the agenda for discussion at some point. I'd like to take a look at a wage theft ordinance or a wage theft resolution. I know that Iowa City has a a wage theft resolution. I'd like to take a look at that, see what we can do as a city. There's been some instances of of wage theft in our community. And, you know, as always, I always want to find solutions, things that we can take a look at to to prevent those kinds of things from happening. And then council member Dodd's had also mentioned a hate crime ordinance at the last meeting. I would love to get that on the agenda sometime as well. And that is all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anything else good for the order? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Gross, seconded by?
Second.
By Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.